I'll call to order this regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission this Monday, June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Clerk, can you take the roll?
Commissioner Al. The of Mount Pleasant, the county of Isabella, and the state of Michigan.
Simon.
In the state of Michigan, Isabella County, city of Mount Pleasant.
Commissioner Gillis.
Mount Pleasant, Isabella, Michigan.
Commissioner Ronan.
City of Mount Pleasant, the county of Isabella, and the great state of Michigan.
Commissioner Tollis.
City of Mount Pleasant, county of Isabella, state of Michigan.
Vice Mayor Frischbacher.
The city of Mount Pleasant, the county of Isabella, in the state of Michigan.
Mayor Joseph.
City of Mount Pleasant, county of Isabella, in the state of Michigan. It looks like we have everyone here today. Today, we're going to start with a proclamation recognizing Juneteenth. So I'll read that proclamation. Whereas, Juneteenth, or Juneteenth Independence Day, commemorates the traditional observance of the end of slavery in the United States, and is observed annually on June nineteenth. And whereas, President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January first, eighteen sixty-three, declaring enslaved individuals in Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas, more than two years would pass before the news reached Texas, and on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Union Major General Gordon Granger and his regiment arrived in Galveston and spread the word that slavery had been abolished. And whereas, the following year, the first official Juneteenth celebrations took place in Texas and have continued across the United States throughout the years. And whereas, June nineteenth has a special meaning and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and nineteenth, and has been celebrated by African-American community, by the African-American community, for over a hundred and fifty years. And whereas, the city of Mount Pleasant supports our nation's Declaration of Independence, which provides that all men are created equal, and acknowledges that we should celebrate and enjoy liberty and justice for every citizen. Now, therefore, I, William L. Joseph, mayor of the city of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, as Juneteenth Celebration Day in Mount Pleasant, and further resolve to support the education and informational outreach by Central Michigan University on June eighteenth to involve our larger community in this celebration. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand in the great seal of the city of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, this fourteenth day of June. Next, we have an introduction of recent cities, city employees hired.
Leanne Walker joined us as an office professional on June seventh. Leanne joins the Recreation Department, where she will focus on the PEAK program. Leanne comes to us from Mount Pleasant Public Schools, where she was a resource room paraprofessional at Ventura Elementary. She has first-hand knowledge of the PEAK program, where she has been a special needs program assistant and a summer camp staff member since April of two thousand and nineteen. Leanne received her bachelor's degree in journalism and music from Central Michigan University. Welcome, Leanne.
Well, I've actually had the pleasure to meet Leanne and just like to thank her for her service to the, to the city and welcome her to the city of Mount Pleasant organization. Next, we have a presentation by Lieutenant Don Sistema on Recovery, Independence, Safety, and Empowerment, the RISE partnership.
And before we start this, Mayor, you'll recall, we entered into this partnership earlier this year. So Lieutenant Seitzma has done a pre-recorded information blurb for you this evening, and then Director Loria is available if you have any questions after the presentation. So Nick, if you want to go ahead and run the pre-recorded one first, please.
Hi, I'm Don Seitzma. I was asked today to talk to you about the pilot program that RISE advocacy and the Mount Pleasant Police Department entered into regarding providing on-scene advocacy for domestic violence and sexual assault. In November of two thousand and, of two thousand and twenty, RISE contacted our department wanting to enter into a pilot program to see if the need was there to provide this service. We reached a memorandum of understanding to provide a domestic and sexual violence response team, and the pilot project was to run from December fourteenth of two thousand and twenty until the end of May in two thousand and twenty-one. We have reached the end of that program, and I just want to give you an update about what the program is all about and the things that we have learned from it. At, at the onset, the goals were to coordinate an immediate on-scene response to victims of domestic violence and sexual violence. This includes crisis intervention, information for crime victims, insane advocacy, but to also provide emotional support to the victims in these incidents. This pilot program was to also provide victim-centered and offender-focused services to maximize and eliminate any further victim, or trauma to the victim, and it also provided the ability to enhance law enforcement's abilities to obtain information that may reduce the rates of recidivism and facilitate prosecution when appropriate. Those were the goals as we went into the program, and the, the way we implemented those goals is to, our other procedure for this was anytime that we had a custodial arrest in a domestic violence situation, we would contact RISE for them to respond to the scene. Now, we would only contact them between the hours of seven AM until midnight, and they were able to respond during those hours. Anything that happened outside of those hours, we would notify them the next business day so that they can make contact with the victim. The officers on scene requesting RISE response would wait on the scene with the RISE advocates until they were no longer needed. So the procedure was pretty simple, just to call them in the case of custodial arrests. The results, what we found, were that during the pilot program from December until May, RISE responded to the scene about seven times, and they've also were able to make telephone contact in other instances on several occasions. The, the other result that we experienced, that officers have had the opportunity to interact with RISE staff to gain a better understanding of the services that RISE provides, and that allowed them to make referrals to other citizens for RISE's services. And it also created an open dialogue between both agencies that was able to enhance the service that both agencies provide to the community. Where we go from here is, since we're at the end of the pilot program, we're going to keep our procedure in place for notifying RISE during the hours of seven AM till midnight, seven days a week. But we're going to enhance that by notifying them on a weekly basis of incidents of domestic violence and provide the contact information to those victims so that RISE can reach out and make contact with those victims to provide any services that they may need. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
I'd like to apologize. I, I messed up Don's last name, Seitzma, when I introduced him. I should know better. But I really appreciate the, the information there on that program, and, and since it started, been interested in how it's been going. I think obviously that's a, an area where resources in our community can really benefit the way our police handle crimes of that nature and, and handling, you know, victims' recovery. So is there any questions from the commission for, on the presentation? George, Commissioner Ron.
Yeah, I don't know that I actually have, I, I had a hard time hearing it, to be honest. I think my computer wasn't functioning terrifically well. But did they say there were seven incidences that took place where RISE was involved? Is that what it was? Yeah, okay, great. I'm sorry. That, that's the phone. And that they're going to start notifying them weekly of incidents that took place of domestic violence. You know, this is actually state-of-the-art. I've been doing research in this area for, I don't know, thirty years, thirty-five years. I treat perpetrators. I don't treat victims. Well, we, we treat victims here as well. But, you know, my protocol has been for violent offenders and treating. And I can tell you, this is, it's, it's great to see the police and RISE working together. This is, this, this, this is, it's state-of-the-art. It's where it needs to go. It's pretty, it's absolutely impressive. So I, I guess I don't have a question, but except it's nice to see it happening, and it really is a, a stellar program.
Commissioner Gillis.
Yes, I also commend our police officers for collaborating and, and getting involved in this approach. We need to connect as many community members to resources and also allow our community to know that police and other agencies always protect each other and the community. It ta, it takes a village. I also would love, in the future, and I know this is probably on the back burner, if this is successful, I know it was a pilot program, and obviously, we're going to try to continue that with those calls and outreach through that RISE connection. Is, is there anything in the future to be established for incidences and crimes that may involve addiction of drugs and use of drugs, where we can also have someone that has more information and background on how to do that? I know our, our police officers are highly trained on de-escalation in different situations and have probably learned through trial and error what to look for or aggressive behaviors in certain kinds of drug use. But I assume that that unfortunately may, may get worse in our present time, and just wondering how we can connect resources with also those types of crimes and victims.
And I think, I think you bring up a good point. As far as on-scene stuff, no, I guess if, if there's a situation where the scene isn't secure or safe and the person is unpredictable, there's not going to be any sort of health professional that is, is going to come into that, nor do we expect them to. But we have been able to provide them in contact with already the resources that are out there, whether it's the, the addiction clinics or, or something along those lines. But the first step, I think, in any, excuse me, in any of this, is, and I'm not sidestepping the, the question or the drug addiction part of it, but the next building block that we're really focused on is the mental health stuff. We do, again, we do in the community have the, the drug addition, addiction resources, and we do provide that to the people as well.
Thank you, Director.
Vice Mayor Frischbacher.
Yeah, um, Director Loria, I'd like to commend you on this program. Obviously, whenever we can kind of get in there right when the trauma happens, you know, there's only five hours between the time that the trauma happens and PTSD can take hold of the person. So anytime we can bring somebody in during that time to be that safe space for them, that's great. And I, I commend you guys working with RISE. I know RISE has been talking about this, and then it's been a, as far as they, they can see, it's definitely a successful program. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, and we've definitely seen benefits because, you know, there's times when, you know, the officer gets in a hurry. They, you know, whether it's other calls or, you know, they know they have a whole bunch of paperwork, it makes them look unempathetic. And that's, that's not the intent, and what this does is really turns them over to people who are used to listening and, and dealing with these types of victims, and we couldn't, we couldn't be happier with the way it's shaken out. But all the credit really goes to Andy Latham and Don Seitzma. They've done all the, the legwork with support, obviously, from Nancy, and, and, and RISE has been great. So I appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Well, thank you again to Lieutenant Seitzma, and it, and Director Loria. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? Okay, don't see any hands up. And so at this time, I will open up public input on agenda items. This is obviously an item, time for the public to address the commission on any item that's on the agenda. You can raise your hand by either going to the bottom of your screen and hitting the raise hand button. If you're with us by Zoom, if you're with us by your telephone, you can hit star nine, and we do ask that you state your name and your address for the record. Mandra Ridley, did we have any email comments?
No, Mayor, we do not have any that have been submitted.
I don't see any hands up in our attendees section, so I will close the public input on agenda items at this time, and we'll go to the receipt of petitions and communications, and I'll hand it over to you.
Yes, there's a long list of the petitions and communications this evening. You have the report on pending items, as well as the complaints received. You have the December twenty twenty minutes of the principal shopping district, the March minutes of the Tax Increase Finance Authority, March minutes of the Traffic Control Committee, April minutes of both the Airport Joint Operations and Management Board and the Parks and Recreation Commission, and then we included the April minutes from the Planning Commission that we missed in the last agenda packet, as well as their May minutes. And then you have correspondence from City Assessor Chris Cookie indicating his appreciation for the amount of time that he worked at Mount Pleasant, with Mount Pleasant. And then you have two resignations from the Principal Shopping District Board that are in the packet, and both of these individuals are resigning due to change in ownership in their buildings. So those vacancies have been turned over to the Appointments Committee.
Right. Thank you, Mandra Ridley. Next, we have the consent calendar. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent calendar this evening? All right, I don't see any hands up. So at this time, Mandra, would you like to go through our consent calendar?
Yes, this too is a long list of items for this evening, but it starts out with the approval of your minutes of your regular meeting of May twenty-fourth. Secondly, is a traffic control order for your consideration. And as you know, this temporary order has been in place for ninety days, and this order is to limit the parking along the south side of Michigan Street during the drop-off and pickup times at Sacred Heart Academy. And during the temporary period, it seemed to have had the desired impact of increasing safety in that area, and so we are recommending that that be implemented as a final traffic order. In regard to the capital improvement plan, you'll recall, you received that at your first meeting in April, and we've had three work session discussions regarding that. And during those work session discussions, there was general agreement to change the cost allocation for both commercial alley reconstruction projects and the installation of pedestrian lighting. So those changes have been implemented, and the revised pages for the plan were included in your agenda packet. So we're recommending that the city commission approve the capital improvement plan with those page amendments. Next, we're recommending you set a public hearing on the proposed ordinance changes to both Chapter ten and Chapter ninety-one of the Code of Ordinances. And this is based on our work session discussion of a couple of weeks ago, where we talked about the health and safety issues related to animals, and that the additional tools that this ordinance amendment would provide staff and our partners in addressing the education and coordinated solutions for those areas. So the public hearing would be held on June twenty-eighth. The next item is, as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, we've been contracting with Cookie Property Services since two thousand and seventeen as our assessor of record, and Mr. Cookie informed us earlier this year that he's taking a different career path since he recently finished law school. When we appointed City Clerk Heather Bauch as our interim assessor, we indicated that that was a temporary solution, why we continue to look at other alternatives. And luckily, we were able to ident, or receive two proposals from assessing services firms, and were able to get in contact with them primarily based on Heather's contacts through the Assessors Association. So the two proposals we received were very similar in many areas, and tonight, we are recommending to you a contract with Sunrise Assessing Services, and the recommendation is based primarily on the fact that the principal of the firm is an MMao, which is the highest level of certification, and she will be doing the majority of the actual work on the assessment role, whereas the other firm would have had the next lower level of assessing certification, providing the majority of the work, and would have been overseen by someone who was at the highest level. The contract would be for seventy-five hundred dollars a month, and would include a three percent increase each April first of the contract, and it would last until March of two thousand and twenty-four. But as we've done in the past with these contracts, we evaluate it each year and see if any adjustments are needed based on service levels and the expertise of the existing staff. So we're recommending you authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. And assuming it is approved, assuming the consent calendar is approved, Ruth Scott, who is the principal of the firm, is on the meeting tonight, and we can move her into the live part so that you can put a name and a face together. And again, assuming that contract is approved under state law, you have to take action to officially appoint the city assessor. So we're recommending the appointment of Ruth Scott as the city assessor, and we would continue to have City Clerk Heather Bauch as a deputy assessor so that she could provide some onsite services as needed, and both of those appointments would be effective July first of this year. The next grouping of items, which is item number twenty-two on your agenda, is an item that we tried to wrap up before Chris Bundy was, as Chris Bundy was retiring, and these five agreements document various facility use agreements with many of our partners. And in the first three cases, the two contracts with Little League and the contract with the Central Michigan Area Soft Club Softball, you agreed to these contracts in principle when those improvements were made in our park system, but we were a little slow in getting the actual contracts put together. So now we have those contracts in place, working with Mike Homier's firm, and they document the mutual expectations of both our partners and the city in the use of those facilities. In addition, there are two new agreements. One of them is to document the longstanding agreement we've had with Isabella Bank regarding the use of funds annually that they provide for the maintenance of the Centennial Gardens at Nelson Park. And then the last contract is a new one, which would be with the Isabella County Juvenile Court System, and this would allow them to use the fenced-in area near Mill Pond Park for a community garden. The juvenile court system has utilized this concept for a number of years at a different location, very successfully. And last year, they contacted us about the possibility of using that fenced-in location near Mill Pond Park. So we're recommending you authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign all five of those agreements, as they've been drafted by the city attorney, and then provide further authority to have the city manager sign the agreements in subsequent years, assuming that no terms or conditions have changed. And then the next item on the consent calendar is a policy for your consideration on special assessments. And you'll recall, during our capital improvement plan discussions, we talked a lot about the preferred allocation of costs for certain special assessment projects. And as general agreement was reached on those allocations, I indicated that it would be wise for us to document those in a policy, so that policy is before you this evening. It, the policy that's before you has two sections that were previously approved. The top section, which was the section about allocation for residential alleys, was approved in two thousand and eighteen, and the bottom section about repayment terms was also approved at that time. So what's been added to the policy is the cost allocation that was generally agreed to during this year's work session for commercial alleys and for pedestrian lighting. And then we also included the provisions that have generally been agreed to in previous years about new sidewalks. So we're recommending that you formally rescind the two thousand and eighteen policy and approve this new replacement policy so that everything related to special assessments is in one location. And then the last item on the consent calendar is the approval of payrolls and warrants.
Commissioner Gillis.
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Commissioner Elser.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as presented. Any discussion? Commissioner Gillis.
Yes, just a quick question on the sidewalks, because that stuck out when it said something about since two thousand and fourteen, that it had been funded as a hundred percent. I was just gonna add, I think that is actually more like two thousand and sixteen, because I think we found, unless we didn't build any in two thousand and fifteen, which I knew we did it on-off year for a while. But I think we found that the first year that I became city commissioner, going actually to a conference and sitting in on a thing, presentation about what you could use Act fifty-one money for. So just wanted to bring that to your attention in case, unless we did that before, but I'm pretty sure we, we found that.
I think the draft policy says since two thousand and fourteen, Commissioner Gillis.
Yeah, it does, but I think that it was later. It was two thousand and sixteen.
Oh, you're thinking it was later than that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we can double check that as far as when that was formally done so that we can fix that before it's posted on the website, if you're okay with that.
Sure. And I just want, another example of sometimes the conventions that we go to provided by Mid-Michigan League, that you just end up picking a conference to sit in and picking up something that we brought back to Mount Pleasant where it used to be 50/50. So before that, everybody was paying 50% for their sidewalks. And as we change these ordinances, where now what we used to assess, we're now assessing it different portions or ratios. Know, community members, that if we could fund everything at 100%, we would try to do that. And hopefully, the more we try to ask for more revenue sharing and other ways to cut budgets, hopefully we'll provide more and more to the community. So I like the ratios that we ended up with. And of course, I have been thrilled that we have been able to cover those sidewalks at 100%. So thank you, staff, and thank you for all the work that has been done to make those changes.
I don't see any other hands up for discussion. So at this time, I think we can vote on the approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Preshbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, at this time, Manager Ridley, would you like to introduce Ruth Scott?
Yeah, I'm moving her into the, there we go. So yes, Ruth Scott is with us this evening. So I've just moved her into the video part of the meeting. So Ruth, if you can turn on your video, they will be able to put a name and face together. And if you want to make a couple of comments, you are free to do so. There she is. Ruth, your audio is not working though. I don't show you as being muted. No.
Nancy, do we have the capability to spotlight her?
You can change that on your own view to be able to do that. Let me see if, Nick, can you change the view so that we just have the one face on the screen? It's still not gonna help with the audio, but at least people will be able to see her face a little bit better.
You can't hear me yet?
Oh, now we can.
Okay, all right. For some reason with this computer, I have to play with the microphone back and forth. I end up where I started, but it takes a minute. So it's nice to see you all. I am, as Nancy said, I'm a Level 4 Assessor or a Master Assessor. I've been in the business for about 21 years. I started off as an Assistant Assessor and then took a unit that was probably about the size of the city of Mount Pleasant as my first unit. It was a Level 3 unit at the time, so an advanced unit. And it was similar in size and in value. I think you have, you have a more developed downtown district and whatnot. And then in 2012, I took a position as an equalization director, and I've been there since. And I'm just at the, at the point in my career where it's, it is becoming more and more apparent that, you know, having my own business is where I want to be. So I appreciate your consideration. I look forward to digging in and finding out about the city of Mount Pleasant and, you know, getting busy.
Well, Ruth, thanks for being with us tonight. We appreciate that. And you will have other opportunities to interact with Ruth, I am sure, in the future. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ruth.
Any questions at all, or?
Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I probably should have run this by Nancy before the meeting, but do you ever do like presentations to the commission about what an assessor does and how the whole thing works? I mean, I would need that, but I'm just.
Yeah, we certainly can do that. Normally, when we do a unit, we provide regular board reports so that you know basically where we're at and what's going on and what we've been able to accomplish. And if there's ever anything that you want, you know, a more in-depth idea of, we can certainly, you know, meet with you and discuss it and, you know, give you the information you're looking for, sure.
Thank you. Oh, and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. You look like a nice group of people, so I'm looking forward to working with you.
All right. Well, thanks again, Ruth, for being with us, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is item number 15, which is to consider a contract for the executive search firm. And the recommend, I'll hand it over to Nancy, I think, to give a brief overview and then.
Okay. Um, as the commission is aware, the request for proposals was distributed for executive search firms to lead the recruitment process and the hiring of a city manager upon my retirement. Eight responses were received from the request. And the ad hoc committee that was appointed by the mayor, which as a reminder, was comprised of Commissioners Alsager, Commissioner Tolles, and Mayor Joseph, reviewed all eight proposals along with Human Resources Director Suzanne Gandy and myself. So the five of us worked together on it. Based on the review, we initially narrowed the field to three of the firms. And we sent specific follow-up questions to each of those three firms based on their proposal. And then we conducted virtual interviews with all three of the individuals who would be the lead recruiters for the process. And using the quality-based selection process, the ad hoc committee is unanimously recommending the acceptance of the proposal from Walsh Municipal Services, led by Frank Walsh. And the recommendation is based on his extensive experience, the process that he outlined that he would be using, the success he has had in other communities, and the perceived fit with our city commissioners and our staff. So if this recommendation is accepted, Mr. Walsh is also on the meeting tonight. He has to jump off as soon as we're done to attend another city commission meeting in another community. But he is with us at this point, and so we can move him into the meeting so you can put a name and face with him and ask initial questions if you have any. But with that, I would ask if the ad hoc committee members have anything to add before you consider the recommendation.
Um, I, as you know, a member of the ad hoc committee, I thought that Walsh, Frank Walsh really stood out in his preparation, meeting the requirements of what we were asking for. And also when we interviewed, I thought Frank did a really great job of, he knew our city already. He obviously had been doing his research on our community and is familiar with Mount Pleasant. And also was very confident and straightforward in his answers. And I thought that he was someone that the commission could work with very well. And when we heard back from his references and checking his prior work, we heard a lot of great things that were very consistent with how we felt about his submitted, his proposals middle and also the interview. And so I thought it was kind of a no-brainer decision. And I think, I don't want to speak to the other committee members, but I think we all held Mr. Walsh in high regard. And so I see Commissioner Tolles has his hand up, and so I'll hand it to him.
Thank you. I just want to make a quick comment on it. I think we're unanimous with HR Director Gandhi and Manager Ridley and the rest of the ad hoc committee on our whittling down of the eight proponents. There were on a list of three, and I think it was just unanimous on Mr. Walsh. We all presented him with questions. Staff did, and I did, and the other ad hoc committee members did. And I think he did a very professional job. I think he outclassed the other two members that were on there, and the answers were quick and concise. And I would ask the rest of commissioners to support Mr. Walsh as our pick. Thank you.
Commissioner Elsager?
I would reinforce what Mayor Joseph said and what Commissioner Tolles said, that we felt Mr. Walsh was a good fit for our community. And I would again ask the other commissioners to support us in that decision.
Commissioner Ronan?
I need that we approve the contract for the executive search firm as outlined.
Vice Mayor Preshbacher?
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second to approve the contract with the Walsh. I can't remember the name of his company. Okay, any further discussion, question?
Commissioner Gillis?
Just want to thank the ad hoc committee and the staff members and also all the applicants. And then, of course, our final pick. And so I welcome Mr. Walsh. If the votes, if the commission approves. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands up for discussion. So at this time, I think it's appropriate for us to vote on approving the contract with Walsh Municipal Services.
Tolles.
I don't think you could hear you, Heather.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Preshbacher?
Yes.
And Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, and then at this time, Mr. Walsh will join us.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate the honor and the support you've just given me. It means a lot to me. I've been doing recruitment for just over two decades and have enjoyed every minute of it. I look forward to working with Mount Pleasant. Mayor, thank you. You reminded me what my wife keeps telling me. I need to change the name of my firm to something more simpler. And appreciate that. I'll let her know that you agree. And your support means a lot to me, and we'll get going right away. There's no time to waste on this process. And you'll be hearing from me soon. And again, thank you very, very much.
Commissioner Ronan?
Fire up, Chip.
My daughter's a recent graduate, so absolutely.
Well, I don't see any other hands up for questions. And so, Frank, I know you got another commitment, so we won't keep you. But we look forward to working with you, and we look forward to the process.
Thank you very much, and you have a good evening, everyone.
Okay. Next on our agenda is item number 21, which is to consider the resolution to adjust the Union Township meeting for fire protection services. And I'll let Manager Ridley give an overview.
Yes, as the commission will remember, we received grants during 2020 that were specific to public safety-related expenses, particularly way back in April and May. And the final calculation of those grants that we received and the final distribution of the funds just recently occurred. Because this funding was specific to public safety expenditures only, it reduced the net cost of our fire department. And the basis for our contract with the Charter Township of Union is, when it was negotiated, it was based on a percentage of net cost. Now, I have to be upfront with you, there is nothing in the contract that requires us to adjust the payment from the township due to any subsequent events after the contract was approved. But because this funding was specific for fire department expenditures and because of the strong partnership we have with the township, we're recommending that a one-time adjustment be made to the payment from the township to reflect this reduction in the net cost. So applying the standard percentage allocation we used when the contract was first negotiated, the net reduction to the payment, to the township's payment would equate to $54,090. And it would apply to this year only. So we've prepared a resolution for your consideration this evening to approve this one-time reduction and recommend that you approve the resolution as presented.
Commissioner Tolles?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as presented for a one-time reduction in the payment from Charter Township of Union for fire protection cost.
Commissioner Elsager?
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the contract. Any discussion? Commissioner Tolles?
Yeah, I agree with Manager Ridley. This is the fair thing to do. You know, they're paying their fair share, and we're getting a reduction on that grant, so I think we should pass that forward. Thank you.
I agree with Commissioner Tolles. I think that the recommendation really speaks to the relationship that we have with our community partners today. In fact, we had a meeting, the Intergovernmental Committee, which comprises of the city, the township, the county, and the tribe. And a comment was made today that in this community, we have special relationships and that we really work together very well. And I think this is another example of that where we aren't, we aren't seeking to like, you know, outdo our neighbor or be competitive in ways that are not, you know, helpful. So I really think that this, this is a good sign for our community and for this board to take this route and appreciate the partnership we have with the township. Okay. No other hands up. I think we can vote on the recommendation to approve or adjust the contract with Union Township.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Preshbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Okay. Next on our agenda is item number 24, which is to consider a closed session pursuant to subsection 8 C of the Field Meetings Act for strategy and negotiation session connected with the negotiation of collective bargaining agreement. Entertaining motion to go into closed session. Commissioner Gillis?
I move to go into closed session.
Commissioner Ronan?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second to go into closed session and we'll take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Simon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Commissioner Alziger?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pirscher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next is announcements on city-related issues and new business. I had a couple of things that I wanted to point out to the community. Obviously, this week, we, we as the city and also in connection with Central Michigan University, are celebrating Juneteenth tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. They're having a Black History trivia night that is, that's online and you can register for that. As well as on Friday, June 18th, we're having a campus and community celebration at Warner Mall at 2:00 PM. And there will be some city officials there and members from CMU and the community. And it'll be good to bring your kids because there will be some ice cream out here. So it should be a good, good event. And then I'd like to take a shout out to, for our own staff. We were recently awarded two awards for our campaign on COVID awareness. One is an international award from the Communicator Awards, and it was the Award of Excellence, which is their highest award. And we competed with top, top companies in the world and, and we won. So it was, it was really great to see that. And we also got news that we won the Bronze Telly Award. So I'd really like to thank Darcy Orlick for her work and also Paul Loria for being the staple in many of those videos. So great job and, and thank you for your work for the city. And then I'd like to just remind the community that we're still in a pandemic, although things are looking much better. But you can still go get your vaccination shots or shot if you haven't already. And to be mindful of where you're at and wear a mask when you're in large crowds or if you're inside with a large number of people to help, to help keep our rates down and to continue our progress towards getting out of this pandemic. And so with that, Commissioner Gillis?
Yes, I also want to give a shout out to our Public Relations, Darcy Orlick, and the stars of those videos. Obviously, we're recognized as being able to compete with much larger submissions. And I'm glad it was found effective. So congratulations to staff and the stars of those shows, those videos. I also want to encourage community members to look at the website, mountpleasant.org under Boards and Commissions, and we have several openings that we need to be filled by community members. And if there's anything that may interest you and you can give a little time back to the community, we can surely use your gifts. I also would like just to ask if with the recent PSD resignations, and I want to thank both Kurt Rupke and Steve Bissel for their service on the PSD and their longtime service to the community with those businesses they occupied on Michigan Street. So I hope that those continue and I hope good, good luck to them in their new endeavors. I have been speaking to community members about different positions. And I know one thing that is somewhat of a barrier to the principal shopping district appointments is that they usually do it first thing in the morning. And if someone doesn't own their own business and may just own a parcel or a business but works elsewhere, it's hard for them to make that start time. I've mentioned this before about it removes a lot of community members that may want to serve on that board because it starts at eight in the morning. Sometimes they've shoved it back to 8:30, but if a start time for a person is nine o'clock, that's hard to make. So I encourage all of our boards to try to accommodate a more reasonable time for people so then that they might be able to apply to those different commissions and we might be able to fill these vacant slots. So to see if there might be a time slot that would be more, more applicable to working folks. So, but again, thank you for those ones that are serving now. And I hope the community members can find the time to fill some of those vacant spots. So, thank you.
Commissioner Gillis, I would just comment on that. You'll be happy to know that the last time the Principal Shopping District Board met, they actually met in the middle of the day during the lunch hour, I believe it was, because they polled the members to try to find a time that may work better. So they have tried to implement some flexibility in that, so it is less tied to that 8:00 AM time any longer. So that should be helpful.
Great. That's such good news. Thank you.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on that. I mean, it would, just as long as we're meeting at the lunchtime for the PSD, lunch at that time would also be good. I'm just saying, I mean, I think that would help motivate people to whatever, serve on the board, free lunch.
We'll have to get that budget passed, George.
We should do that for City Commission, too.
All right. Any other announcements or city or new business? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands up. And so at this time, we will open up public comment on non-agenda and agenda items. And I will, same process as before. If you're with us by Zoom, you can hit the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And if you're with us by phone, you can hit star nine and it will do the same. Manager Ridley, did we have any email comments for the commission?
No, Mayor, we do not have any.
It looks like Charles. I don't recognize Charles.
Hello, am I coming through okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Charles from 3700 East Deerfield. My first time in one of these meetings, so I apologize if I sound a little out of it or anything. Was interesting in becoming more involved in community affairs here. And I was just curious as to how the city's budget was determined?
So Charles, we usually don't go back, like do a back and forth between, you know, public comment and the commission. But if you'd like, maybe Manager Ridley could follow up with you on, in, on our budget processes.
Yeah, Charles, I was going to say if you'd like to call the city manager's office tomorrow, we could set up time to either talk on the phone or face to face. And I could walk you through how that process works. If you're interested in learning more about it, I would be happy to do that.
Much appreciated and sorry for the trouble.
No, not at all.
All right, well, I don't see any other hands up. Maybe we'll give it a second. See a number just popped up on there. All right. If you are with us by phone and you'd like to make public comment, you can hit star nine on your phone. It will raise your hand and I can recognize you. Okay. All right. Well, at this time, I will close the public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. And we'll recess for about five minutes and we'll reconvene for a work session on the American Rescue Plan funding. And then after that, we will go into closed session. So we'll see everybody in about five minutes.
Commissioner Alziger, I'm wondering if you know that your video is turned off. I'm wondering if you happen to be in the meeting, but your video is turned off? I guess not. I thought I would try.
No, I'm here.
Oh, okay.
I'm here.
Okay. All right. Well, we will reconvene now for our work session on the American Rescue Plan funding. This is the money that we've all been hearing about and anticipating. And I'll really just, I'll hand it over to Nancy and Mary Ann for
Most of what we are going to share with you, we actually put in writing and put in your work session packet. So you would have it for handy reference. But for the benefit of the public, there's a couple of things that I guess I would like to say verbally so that the public understands what you're talking about. The American Rescue Plan provided money to local units of government. And there's really two different areas. There's things called entitlement communities, which are really, really the larger counties or the larger metro type areas in Michigan. Because we are not under a short timeline to have to use them. So we want to make some good long-term decisions for our community. And at the staff level, we've recommended that we need some more information before we can have too in-depth of a conversation about it. For instance, it would be helpful to know exactly how much we're going to get, first of all, would be an important piece. But also if there's any additional guidance from the state of Michigan. We also think it would be important to know what allocations of money are available within our community for other business sectors or other industries or other entitled nonprofits or whatever throughout our community. So that we aren't duplicating efforts with the federal funds. It's important, I think, to work with the county and the township to coordinate efforts. And as the mayor mentioned this morning in our meeting with them, everybody had that same desire to make sure we coordinate efforts. And each entity indicated they too were not in a rush to make quick decisions on the utilization of the money. And then lastly, our caution is that in Mount Pleasant, it seems that our economy has always lagged the rest of the nation. When we have a downturn, our downturn seems to come later. When we have an upturn, our upturn tends to come later. So we don't feel like we know the impact on our economy yet from the pandemic. And so it might be wise for us to be patient and see how that does affect our local economy. And I guess the last thing I would mention, which this was not in the write-up, is that there is a formula that can be used to calculate the lost revenue for the local government. It's a pretty complicated formula. And we have not yet done that calculation to know what that formula would show for our amount of lost revenue. But if we go down that track, we must use the formula that's provided by Treasury. And we have not done that yet. One advantage of utilizing that, some of the funds for that lost revenue would be that the funds could be deposited into our general fund. And then you, as the commission, would have the ability to use those funds on any government-related expenses. So there might be less strings attached to them than what some of the other programs may have if we directly use the federal funds for those programs. But I don't know if that makes sense for us to do that yet or not. But we haven't even done the calculation, so I just wanted to let you know that. And so what we wanted to do tonight is just to make sure you know what we know and the community knows what we know. And answer any questions that you may have about what we know thus far on this topic. Before we turn it over to questions, oh, Mary Ann, is there anything else that you want to add to it?
Yeah, I would add that this afternoon, there was a MML session that the Director of Local Government Services for Department of Treasury was on. And he was going, going through what was going to be gone over at the webinar on the 17th. And he indicated that it's a work in progress for the state too. And that they don't expect to be able to answer everybody's questions on Thursday. And they are taking their time to make sure that as a state, we're using the funds the best that we can for the biggest bang for our buck, if you will. So I don't expect a whole lot more after the 17th, so we'll just have to be waiting.
Thank you, Nancy. Thanks, Mary Ann. Any questions for Commissioner Tullis?
Nancy, does the correlation of these losses have anything to do with the amount that we might get? Is there any correlation between the two or no?
No, there's not any correlation at all, Commissioner Tullis. The amount we get is primarily based on our population numbers. And then spreading the money based on population among the non-entitlement communities.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gillis?
Is that based on the last census?
I think they're basing it on, boy, I don't know, Mary Ann, do you know the answer to that?
It's on a 2019 number that they're using. And ours is actually 24,197 or something like that. We do have what number they're going to be using for our population and what the total population for all the NEU units like us are.
I remember something being a 25,000 threshold.
Oh.
That, but.
Yeah, that used to be the case in many, in the distribution of how state shared revenue was allocated. Commissioner Gillis, there was a threshold there. But that does not apply to these federal funds. And actually doesn't apply to state shared revenue any longer either. But that threshold is not as critical any longer.
Okay.
And they haven't indicated that it is going to be what our 2020 census number is either. So that's, I'm not for sure exactly where they got that 2019 number.
You know, it might be worthwhile to, to have an open forum for community members to throw out any ideas if we, I don't know if that could be applied. The, well, like you say, it's 151-page restriction or guidelines of what we can use the money for. But might be helpful to have some community input on that with that kind of influx. Because it isn't one-time thing. I would hate to it to be dissipate, you know, where there's nothing more sustaining, I guess.
Yeah, and I think once we have a better idea and exactly some more details on what it can and can't be spent on, that might be more beneficial than having wide-open floodgates to get ideas about it. Because many of those ideas that might come up at this point may not even be doable. But I think that might be a good idea further down the road, once we know some more.
Well, we can thank our taxpayers, because that is actually coming back to us. Or our future generations.
We got an email about a seminar tomorrow about what's going on nationally at this, at the, across states and across communities. Is that a meaningless webinar to go to, because I signed up for it on the Recovery Act? I mean, did.
I didn't know, who, who was the invite from Commissioner Ronan?
I don't have it right in front of me, and I'd have to log off, and it's too complicated.
You know, I, I think both Mary Ann and I have attended a number of them. I think we've found the ones by National League of Cities and Michigan Municipal League to be the most appropriate for us. So if it's one of those, it's probably worthwhile, that I wouldn't know.
Okay, thank you. I think it was, that's great. Yeah, in, in general, I, I know we don't know what we can and can't spend it on. I, I like the idea of thinking strategic and thinking long-term. So, so I mean, if that's where the city is suggesting we go, I'm, I'm absolutely behind that. Both strategic and long-term that. So when I look at these things under the 151-page document, I'm, I'm more excited about the last two than the first two. So I, I don't know if you're looking for guidance or not, but that's certainly where I would shout out to that. And we'll just wait till the guidelines come out, I guess, or till they're more firmly done. I'll go to that webinar tomorrow, too.
And that's a, a good point that you make up, that the state has recommended for municipalities who don't have a strategic plan to be doing that right now while you're waiting to find out how much funds you have. But we're ahead of the game. We have a master plan that's up to date. And our capital budget shows our capital needs also.
Well, I know Nancy's not looking for ideas tonight, but just when you gave your presentation and mentioned water, sewer, and broadband, one of the first thoughts that went through my mind was, since we're talking about some big improvements at our sewage plant and that is potentially, you know, a millage that everyone would be paying on, that might be a way to have everyone feel the impact. I don't think all the money, I, I don't think everyone pays attention to that. So that might not be a good use for all the money, but maybe some of it.
Yeah, that's a very good point, Commissioner Allsager, because that, ever, all the revenue for our water recovery facility plant is from rates and fees. And that is paid by everybody throughout the city, whether they're taxable or non-taxable entity. So we have talked about that might make some sense. And that way, our rate increases would not have to be as large. But you make a good point. People aren't going to notice that as much. But it would have a, a financial impact across everybody throughout the whole community.
Right.
Commissioner Ron? Again, I know, my fear is that if we start discussing this, we'll be here till 11:00. So, and I understand that, but yeah, I guess, I, I guess, you know, the strategic part I would think about would be much more towards something that's going to generate tax revenue or something that's going to generate some potential growth in the city. As opposed to just keeping things the way they are. But, but, you know, so I, I'm going to push some, I just want to say that. But, you know, it's something that is good for the future of the city, that promotes growth. I, I'd probably think about paying for the water lines in the Main Street downtown, you know, so we can get those buildings moving again or something. But I, and I'll be quiet, because I know this will go on forever. But I love the thinking that's strategic and.
I guess my only comment on is, I, I wonder if it might be helpful to have maybe like sent a link to those 150 pages of, of guidelines, just so. I'm sure some of it will be very jargony and, and we might not, you know, capture all that it's saying. But it might be helpful just to clear up, you know, kind of like, what are the possibilities for us as we kind of get down the road of, you know, where do we really want to spend the funds? Because I'm, there are a lot of options and a lot of good, good options, so. But it can't hurt.
Yeah, we can certainly provide that link to the whole commission. It's good bedtime reading, I'll tell you.
I would say that they're not complete yet either. The National League of Cities has been asking for some revisions to it, too. So it's even, nothing is solid right now. Everything's a moving, flowing process.
Yeah, they keep referring to them as the interim regulations.
Okay.
But it's a start.
Right.
Any other items for discussion related to this? Okay, well, uh, let's, uh, do we want to take a couple of minutes before we go to close session?
I have a question. Can I have one question? Or this is not part of the work session, but there was something I read about consumer energy having a phone number app to report any lights down. I think we got it in the email from you. Is that right, Nancy?
Yeah, they have a new website or app that you can use to report those.
And how much work would it be to have that on our website also? Or do we have a, somewhere that we could provide that for the, a link?
I will look to see if that's possible, Commissioner Gillis.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Mayor, I was just going to say, before we go to closed session, we should make sure the public understands that at the end of that closed session, we do not intend to take any action. So we won't be coming back to this live meeting. We will just adjourn as soon as that closed session is over. So just any of the public that's watching or is in our attendee list, just so they know we won't be, this will be the end of our public meeting this evening. And then the commissioners, you'll recall, you have a separate link that you have to use for the closed session to ensure it's a, a private meeting. So you'll have to sign off of this one and sign back onto the closed session meeting. So we could take a couple of minutes to do that.
All right, sounds good. See everybody in a couple of minutes.
Yeah. I guess my only comment on is, I, I wonder if it might be helpful to have maybe like sent a link to those 150 pages of, of guidelines, just so. I'm sure some of it will be very jargony and, and we might not, you know, capture all that it's saying. But it might be helpful just to clear up, you know, kind of like, what are the possibilities for us as we kind of get down the road of, you know, where do we really want to spend the funds? Because I'm, there are a lot of options and a lot of good, good options, so. But it can't hurt.
Yeah, we can certainly provide that link to the whole commission.
Okay.
It's good bedtime reading, I'll tell you.
I would say that they're not complete yet either. The National League of Cities has been asking for some revisions to it, too. So it's even, nothing is solid right now. Everything's a moving, flowing process.
Yeah, they keep referring to them as the interim regulations.
Okay.
But it's a start.
Right.
Any other items for discussion related to this? Okay, well, uh, let's, uh, do we want to take a couple of minutes before we go to closed session?
I have a question. Can I have one question? Or this is not part of the work session. But there was something I read about consumer energy having a phone number app to report any lights down. I think we got it in the email from you. Is that right, Nancy?
Um, yeah, they have a new website or app that you can use to report those.
And how much work would it be to have that on our website also? Or do we have a, somewhere that we could provide that for the, a link?
I will look to see if that's possible, Commissioner Gillis.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Mayor, I was just going to say, before we go to closed session, we should make sure the public understands that at the end of that closed session, we do not intend to take any action. So we won't be coming back to this live meeting. We will just adjourn as soon as that closed session is over. So just any of the public that's watching or is in our attendee list, just so they know we won't be, this will be the end of our public meeting this evening. And then the commissioners, you'll recall, you have a separate link that you have to use for the closed session to ensure it's a, a private meeting. So you'll have to sign off of this one and sign back onto the closed session meeting. So we could take a couple of minutes to do that.
All right, sounds good.